I was, yeah. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the committee, the whole meeting. Uh, where we're going to talk about our healthcare advocacy. Before we start, let's just take a moment and acknowledge the uh, the traditional territories of our neighbors, uh, the Prophet River First Nation and the Fort Nelson First Nation. Uh, please be advised that today's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually is being streamed and be part. So the agenda is good. Anything to add? Anybody okay with it? Okay. There's no business. Oh, I guess this is business arising, the health advocacy strategy update. So today's our lunch and learn. I'll turn it over to staff. Scott.
Come here. I'm gonna pass it on to Jaylene, who I think is gonna pass it on to uh, Mr. Mr. Blackie. So so maybe I will skip, I'll skip that one. Let's go straight to Doug. So um, Doug has a bit of a presentation um, for those. I think everyone's met Doug's, we could probably.
I have not met Doug.
So uh, hey, we can go around and do some intros. So Doug, we'll, we'll, we'll start with you and then we can kind of go around the table if that works.
Great. Uh, thanks Scott and hi, everybody. Uh, so I'm Doug Blackie. Um, I'm a health management consultant. Uh, been working with the Northern Rockies for the last year and a half, two years. Um, my relationship, I think with the Northern Rockies goes back a lot further than that and uh, previous roles that I held with the provincial health services authority as well as the B C Ministry of Health. So um, been aware of what's going on and the great work in Fort Nelson for many years and have had the privilege of working um, with council and staff for the last uh, oh, almost two years now on a number of different projects, which has been quite exciting. And uh, yeah, my background is in healthcare about twenty-six years, I think now. Um, I'm based in Edmonton, but a lot of my work continues to be in British Columbia. That's where I've spent a majority of my, my healthcare career.
We're gonna start, we'll start, I guess, with councillor Enix.
Brandy Enix, newly elected councillor.
Hey Doug, councillor Andrews.
Councillor Gerwing.
All right. Thank you. It's nice meeting you. I'm uh, Rob Fraser. I'm, I'm the mayor. I have a little bit of background in the health advocacy that we were doing in the Peace uh, River area. So uh, this is not foreign to me. So it's nice to meet you.
Councillor Oper here. Good to see you.
Councillor Souls here. Good to see you, Doug.
I'm at rounds it out, except we do have a new face, which you probably can't see the camera. Um, you probably see your hand, which is Jody Lee, but uh, and that's it. And you know myself and Jaylene, sure. Hand it over to you now, Doug.
Great. Well, thank, thanks again, Scott and, and uh, and new and uh, and uh, returning councillors and of course uh, Mayor Fraser, your reputation precede you. I spent a lot of time uh, when I was at the Minister of Health preparing ministry briefings in your previous role. So for U B C M, but it all in a good way. So and uh, so today, yeah, I've got a few slides. I just want to share with you um, to give uh, new councillor and, and Mayor Fraser a bit of a retrospective, very brief on the work that we've been doing. Um, and then opening up hopefully some conversation about the work that you might want to do um, on the healthcare file. So I'm just going to pluck uh, my slide deck here and hopefully you'll be able to see it. Alright, so what we're uh, going to talk about today is a little bit of, as I said, a bit of retrospective. So we began our engagement with the N R R M back in April of twenty-twenty-one. It was right in the midst of COVID and the beginnings of COVID. So a lot of our work was done remotely. Um, our goal was to try and understand what the top priorities were in the Northern Rockies. There was a lot of work that had been done with the community health plan. We wanted to validate that. But also to understand if there were any new emerging issues and what the priorities were. What were the, maybe the top two or three things that we could really um, help council to focus in on. And our guiding principle was the vision that was shared by uh, the council of the day around um, equitable access to health services for the people of the Northern Rockies. So to better understand where things were at, you know, where things are like the current state, we undertook a number of consultations with the community stakeholders um, and organizations as well as Northern Health, Doctors of B C, Health Match B C and the Rural Coordination Centre of B C. So really just trying to get a sense of where different folks felt that um, health services were heading um, in Fort Nelson. And we also used an appreciative inquiry approach for people to think about what um, a desired future might look like and, and what in the future uh, would be uh, equitable access. So we, we brought all that data together and we landed on um, you know, surprise, three uh, top priorities. The first one being recruitment and retention of healthcare professionals. The second one being patient transport, both emergent and scheduled transportation out of the community. And the third one was virtual care. To the extent that that one might have been influenced by COVID, I don't know. But virtual care has increasingly become a go-to for a lot of rural communities who are trying to sustain access to, to health services. So based on that initial work, the consultations, we conducted two virtual workshops with a cross-section of Northern Rockies elected and staff uh, officials as well as some community members to dig into what we heard and try and validate those, those findings and prioritize them into themes. And again, this was all conducted virtually. You'll see here um, a rough uh, Google Jam board that uh, that we were creating. So we did a bit of, you know, virtual sticky notes and those sorts of things. We looked at a number of different strategies, what we called fifteen percent solutions. So those small things we could do now that maybe would have high leverage in, in the future. And those workshops validated our own findings, which was good, but also identified those strategies. Then we had a virtual summit in September twenty-twenty-one. It was going to be in person, then it was going to be hybrid, and then it ended up being virtual as well as the public health uh, put in new restrictions for the north. But we did bring together and had a really good turnout actually of health providers, community members, uh, local government, First Nations, uh, Fort Nelson First Nation had a great turnout. And we again, talked and validated and socialized um, what these priorities were. But more importantly, we spent the last half of the afternoon where people could discuss how they and their organizations might be able to step up and support um, some of these health system priorities for the Northern Rockies. So over the, following the summit and, and, and a lot of these conversations, we were reporting back to council. We finalized an advocacy strategy, um, brought those back to council in late twenty-twenty-one, early twenty-twenty-two. And the feedback we got from council at that time was a desire for a more succinct action plan specifically around recruitment and retention. So we went and we did that. And we, we developed uh, this action plan. I understand that councils had a chance to look at um, the version that was sort of the most recent, which was a bit long in the tooth um, at a previous meeting. But you would have seen those six strategies that, that we came up with, that focused on recruitment and retention. And we're happy, of course, the two of the top strategies have been um, implemented on council's direction, those being the regional health recruitment liaison as well as the regional recruitment, education and training incentives program, or RETI as we have known to call it. So through twenty-twenty-two, we, we worked with council and staff to develop a, a business case for the recruitment liaison position, including budget and a job profile and, and really trying to, you know, figure out how would we make this position successful and, and sustainable. But we also worked with um, some of our provincial uh, colleagues, obviously Northern Rocky staff and elected officials. Um, and some best practices. We looked at some different best practices. Uh, Peace River Regional District has a program to really ensure that the recruitment, education and um, uh, training program are ready would be effective. And you know, working with council to ensure that it was also sustainable and relevant. Um, so those two uh, programs were approved by council in the summer of twenty-two and then uh, beginning of October of twenty-two, they were announced. And that was exciting because it caused uh, you know, some conversations to occur and, and it, it has put the Northern Rockies on the map provincially in terms of its advocacy and its success in supporting uh, the recruitment and retention of healthcare professionals. And just you know, as a, as a point of clarity, that includes physicians, nurse practitioners, if there was a choice in the community to recruit nurse practitioners as well as registered nurses, L P Ns, healthcare aides, paramedics, um, as well as diagnostic imaging uh, professionals and laboratory professionals. So the, the full gamut and the, the RETI um, program has been set up to prioritize the health professions that are needed in the Northern Rockies. So we're proud to say that both uh, programs are up and running and uh, the regional um, health recruitment liaison has been hired. Uh, as many of you probably know, it's Diana Penny and she's going to be fabulous in that job. She has such a great network and such a great attitude that uh, she was exactly the person we were looking for. And she's going to maintain her contacts as well uh, through the physician organization in Fort Nelson, which I think is going to be quite synergistic. And RETI has actually uh, started to garner some applications. I understand from, from Jaylene that uh, there have been three applications and just under ten thousand dollars awarded. So what are we gonna do next? You know, the, the RETI programs up and running, the liaisons uh, coming up to speed. Exciting developments for the Northern Rockies and really um, in our view, uh, providing the community with a competitive advantage. You're, you know, there's a lot of fish hooks in off the wharf. If you want to use a fishing analogy, there's a lot of fish hooks off the wharf with just one or two fish in the water. So what is going to differentiate um, the Northern Rockies from every other community in the north or the interior um, that is also looking for physicians and nurses and paramedics and, and ultrasound technologists and lab, uh, lab medicine folks. So I think that those two, two programs begin the, 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 the journey down that road. Um, I've gone over the, the recruitment retention action plan, um, which, you know, you looked at, I think at your last meeting. You, there's still a, a number of uh, strategies that were envisioned in that action plan uh, that I think have some potential. A lot of it has um, requires some collaboration and partnership with Northern Health and others. We had talked about developing a bit of a regional health human resources plan. So something really focused on the Northern Rockies to say, so what are the priorities in terms of health recruitment and retention? And, and where are the potential trouble spots? One, two, three years down the road. So for example, if you recruit a physician into the community who's on a three-year return of service, um, you know, something's gonna happen at the end of that third year. They're either gonna stay ideally, or they're going to leave. So part of that planning process is to say, okay, we have a decision point in year two to have a conversation with that physician and really understand uh, what their intentions are. Um, and then, you know, hope for the best and plan for the worst, that that individual is going to leave. So that's just an example of some of the conversation that needs to occur. But again, the municipality on behalf of the community sort of asserting itself into that conversation with the local physicians and with Northern Health to ensure that the citizens of the Northern Rockies continue to get the healthcare that, that they deserve. Some of the other strategies we talked about was getting a conversation going and, and, and really trying to build on the summit we did back in September of twenty-one, which was getting some people together around a table regularly um, in the Northern Rockies, you know, employers, um, industry, business, local, regional government, as well as First Nations government, to have a conversation about healthcare recruitment, healthcare retention, and what each of those partners can bring to the table to help advance that conversation. But we'd also thought and envisioned about a larger northeast table. Um, because you know, when you think about Dawson Creek, Fort St. John, Fort Nelson um, and all the other, you know, communities sort of in that catchment, uh, small and large. You're all going after the same small pool of healthcare professionals. So the question is, is collaboration and cooperation better than competition? Well, that's, that's a question. That's a policy question. And if you wanted to pursue a more cooperative approach of sharing resources or finding the right fit, because a physician who comes and looks at Fort Nelson may also go to Dawson Creek. And at the end of the day, they're going to choose one or the other. Um, and so you know, how, how do you work cooperatively um, and not competitively um, to, to, you know, support each other? Because it is a bit of a win-win sometimes with those sorts of things. So those were, you know, conversations or ideas rather around just continuing the dialogue and maybe changing up the picture a little bit in terms of healthcare recruitment and retention. Um, and then virtual care was, was another one. And, and I've had a few people say, well, what's the virtual care got to do with recruitment? Well, virtual care and, and full staffing at the hospital and, and in the lab and, you know, diagnostic imaging. Those are attractors to the community. So when a physician or a nurse practitioner or even a nurse or any other healthcare professional looks at Northern Rockies, looks at Fort Nelson, they'll say, is the emergency room open? Can I get an X-ray done? Um, you know, those sorts of things. So virtual care is an opportunity to say, okay, I'm the one physician in town. I'm on call. It's two A M. There's been a car accident. I'm up to here. I've got one nurse to help me. I need help. And so virtual care is a way, and this is already being done, is a way to open a window um, to some help, whether it's in Prince George or down in Vancouver from, say, an emergency physician or a trauma surgeon who can help and guide that uh, family physician in Fort Nelson uh, to care for that individual. So you know, that's an example again where virtual care can help. And also when we think about patient transport, increasingly virtual care is not replacing, but it's supplementing that travel. So you know, pre and post-surgical consults and those sorts of things can all be done on virtual care. Um, a lot of mental health has been delivered over, uh, over virtual care with a little so well. So those sorts of things actually can help recruit and retain healthcare professionals if they feel supported by their peers through, through virtual care. Um, so in our, our view, um, attracting uh, and settling and retaining healthcare professionals in the Northern Rockies, I believe is going to continue to be a priority in order to sustain services in the community and access and retain healthcare professionals. And council can choose to, to continue this work or look at other priorities uh, for the coming year. As you know, one of the challenges that has been uh, for many years now is residents having to travel for healthcare. Um, and that was identified in the original community health plan in twenty-nineteen. It was validated as a priority through the process we went through and has been a conversation at the Community Action or Community Health Plan Steering Committee meetings as well as uh, now provincially, the B C Rural Health Network, which the Northern Rockies recently joined, um, has identified a rural patient transport, both emergent and scheduled um, as a priority that it wants to work with government and the health authorities and, and municipalities to, to address and resolve. So you know, we, we, we have other things as well potentially on, on the horizon. The one that is clear and present, I think for a lot of folks is getting a C T scanner uh, finalized, funded, installed and staffed at Fort Nelson General Hospital. Um, and another priority is primary care. It's, it's again, sustaining that, that foundational level of healthcare services um, in Fort Nelson, ensuring that you have the right number of physicians for the community, looking at alternatives, whether it's virtual care, nurse practitioners. Um, and just, you know, working with, you know, Airport Way Medical Clinic, but also working with Northern Health to ensure that those services remain sustainable and accessible um, for the people of the Northern Rockies. So there's a bit that uh, you know, you can grapple with. Uh, certainly, you know, from our perspective, recruitment and retention is a, is a very valid priority. Um, but patient transport, I think is, is certainly one that uh, you know, the returning councillors are know to be a significant challenge in for residents of the Northern Rockies and continues to be. It is a provincial issue. And I think some of the solutions are provincial, and I think the Northern Rockies could take a very instrumental role in advocating at the provincial level, but also at the regional level. So working with Northern Health, B C Trans, uh, B C Transit and other partners to recognize that travel in from a rural community to a larger community, be it for um, an M R I or for cancer treatment or uh, to deliver a baby is going to be required for some time. And so how do we remove the barriers? How do we limit the barriers? And how do we make it easier for people and their families uh, to be able to travel? And uh, so again, it is a bit multifaceted. So that, that was identified as, as a potential follow-on to the recruitment retention. But I leave it to council and your wisdom uh, to, to, you know, yeah. Provide some ideas or some thought or direction on what you feel might be the most beneficial priority uh, for health services in the north, uh, Northern Rockies going forward. And it's over to you.
That's all. Does anybody have any question? There's a lot there. There's a lot there. Been doing a lot. It's succeeding and getting some things done. Uh, I think, you know, it's a, maybe a wait and see how the recruitment liaison position works out and, and what, what she's able to, to get done. But I, I think for me and what we've been talking about last month, the C T scanners at the top of my mind is, is the, as the route we need to go. There are a lot of other parts to this. And there's, you know, the three main, three main topics that you bring up. I, I don't think we need to wait for one to be finished before we deal with some of the others. I mean, Northern Lights College is, is having a, a review on their five-year strategic plan. And there's some parts in here where we should be working with, with them to see what they might be able to do to make this a center of excellence for some type of healthcare recruiting or, or uh, professionals. So I think we should be talking to them about that. Uh, you already talked about the B C Rural Health Network. Uh, there's also some work being done by the Mayor's Healthcare Alliance, which is just trying to, you know, reset up their, their meeting after U B C M. Uh, the Resource Municipalities Coalition has a healthcare strategy and advocacy work that they're doing at a very high level. Um, so those are all opportunities for us, I guess, to network regionally and provincially, I suppose, with the alliance and the rural network. But locally, I think that getting that C T scats is closest we're gonna be to to, to moving something else along and that we are. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, yeah, I didn't um, understand that today's session would be um, brainstorming um, the future where we were going. I thought that that was going to be done um, at our strategic planning sessions. So I'm not prepared. I, I'm not prepared to um, give input into where I personally feel um, that we should be going other than. I mean, I could do it. I just don't know that.
You haven't stuck to your thoughts.
Like that, you know, like if that's what you're looking for today, that fulsome discussion, I thought. I, I kind of anticipated that this was um, providing all of the information as a review or new um, in preparation for the strategic planning session. So I don't want to waste anybody's time by laying out what I think we should, the next step should be. Unless you want me to.
Well, the intent, the intent wasn't to do the brainstorming session, try to gauge who we're going next, because we're going, that's occurring as part of the strategic planning piece. The intent was to, to do a bit of a you know, high-level background of for the newer councillors, um, where we, where what's occurred and and where that direction may look like it's going and, and to have dialogue. Need to hold me like in terms of provide opinion. I mean, as the mayor said, I mean, um, the C T scanner is front and center right now, which is something that's um, you know, very, very, it, it's a very important priority for the community. The, uh, the doctors have brought it forward. Uh, his council has a community health plan as we discussed, and I mean, it's, it's, it's front and center. Um, and it's one, it's one of those areas that will help remove that barrier when it comes to needing to travel for a service. If it's emergency service or even if it's the, for, for uh, investigative, uh, investigative service from a, from a medical condition. Um, so it takes one of the items off the list that someone would need to travel for, which is another issue, right? And, and then here's the last meeting. Your call, we had Mr. Campbell here from Billers talked about not having received any calls yet. So, so I, you know, it's, it's, it's more around that dialogue and it's discussed, you know, it's, for one, it hasn't been introduced this council, um, budgetary changes have occurred too, in terms of how we uh, access the funds to proceed with this compared to, it's a, the, the change that there our regional hospital district process. And also this, it just, you know, just to do a more of a check-in to see if there's, I mean, I don't think we're offside, but it's good for council. This council as a whole, as a new council, hasn't necessarily had any real significant dialogue related specifically to this, right? So if anything, it was at high-level review and um, to discuss your thoughts.
No.
Can I follow up or do you?
Go ahead. I don't see any other lights on though.
Do, okay. So just in follow-up, I think like, um, you know, the C T scanner is like imperative, right? Uh, but I don't want to see that overtake the, the basic work as in, you know, do we have access to ultrasound? Well, you know, I can tell you my story. I think we're on day fifty or whatever, right? Um, do we have consistent um, X-ray? Like, what are the timelines? I mean, and how long are we waiting for services for the lab? Like, these are all service windows that are not necessarily, in my opinion, best practices, but like the mayor alluded to earlier is that, you know, we can walk and talk at the same time. So we can work on the C T scanner. We can work on this ultrasound. We can work on wherever council wants to go, but I think we need to um, make a fulsome plan, right? It's like, so set the priorities and then have that work plan like what is it that we want? We want to have ultrasound? What is best practice for ultrasound? So should be, we be waiting fifty days or is it two weeks? Or like, I don't know. I don't know those answers. And so when we meet with ministers or um, you know, the B C Rural Network, Health Network, it's like, I don't have that information to say best practice says that from the requisition to actually receiving the ultrasound should be what, what should it be? Like, I don't know. And that's the type of information that I believe we as council that are out there lobbying um, to try to make change in our community that first and foremost, we need that type of information to be effective lobbyists.
Councillor Souls?
Yeah, just uh, I, I was thinking that the purpose of our, our gathering, but we all have this different perspective. Uh, the purpose of gathering, I appreciate this re, this report overall, this set of reports actually, because there's a whole lot of summary being done. One thing that I, I um, don't know if I never noticed before in looking at it or what, recently, I, I noticed the context. There's a part of this report, the, that talks about the context of the Northern Rockies. And I, I really cannot support and don't accept what it says. The idea that uh, the economy is in a period of transition going uh, due to ongoing structural changes uh, in oil and gas sector, forestry, mining linked to global disruption, et cetera, et cetera. And it leaves us with the assumption that the current population projections, who did these projections? How they came about? I don't agree with, but there's these projections in the report that say that by twenty forty, we anticipate the population crossover of those being over sixty-five years of age, surpassing the young people as a dominant population group. Like, I don't like that in the context of a forward-looking thing when we spend a great deal of our time as council members in a region advocating for industry to work and so on, knowing that we have some of the world's largest gas reserves, knowing that we have a, a largest piece of un, um, uh, annual, unharvested or touched annual allowable cut in the forest world in B C. And so I just, I don't accept that as the context, but I don't want you to think that I don't like the report. Because I, I appreciate the fact that forward-looking, even if this is where we were to end up with a age, aged, a primarily aged population and less younger ones, that's a symptom that we haven't done, been able to get industry rolling here, because if it were rolling, we would have lots of young families moving in again, which would kind of change the direction. I just don't want this to be a report that we stamp as though this is our thinking. So but I like the report overall and I, I want to make sure that Doug knows for sure that Doug, you know, that we certainly appreciate the work that you've put into pulling the, all these ideas together under one report. And that's awesome.
Thank you, councillors Souls.
Yeah, I, I appreciated, uh, you know, being brought up to date with this report. I didn't necessarily agree with, with everything that was in it either, but I took that sort of mindset that um, that we are, that we are aging. And so because we do have some people who are aging, including, including myself, that uh, you know, we need to be prepared for whatever that ends up looking like. And it's, it hasn't been good enough so far. I'm, I'm a little bit nervous about how much detail we're going to get into uh, with respect to the services that are provided. It, it, you know, is it staff that's going to be doing that as an expectation? Council will be trying to do that. It uh, makes me a, a little bit nervous with respect to the detail, but I suppose understanding it, your point was, understanding the detail helps us to be better lobbyists in the end. That's, that was your point.
Councillor Oper? Uh, I too, I very much enjoyed the summary of all the work that we've done over the last uh, term. But uh, we're still falling behind. I think um, going forward, any strategic planning, we really need to have eternity services included in those discussions. That's so important. If we want a community where we're attracting people that want to build their family, that's, that's a service that really needs to be addressed. And uh, it's just as important as the other services we've discussed today. So. addressed and uh, it's just as important as the other services we've discussed today. So.
Just to comment on what Counselor Goring, what you said, that I think is a couple of components for councils that you want to consider too. And uh, and that's when you look at best practices is, is also is doing the sniff test, the best practices and truly understand and agree if the best practices actually meet the needs of the community and, and here, especially from a, sorry, from a, meet the needs of the community from a from uniqueness that we are in compared to other communities. Um, the, the mayor made a comment in a meeting we had with Annetta a few weeks back around the uh, you know, consideration that Northern Health needs to make and V C H S is the same way when it comes to our geographic location and the challenges, because many times those best practices are the one size fits all approach, which doesn't fit us, right? So it's one thing to say best practices in terms of what the expectation is, or the best practices regarding ultrasound or lab tech here, whatever it might be or, but at the same time, it's what fits the needs. I think one of the, one of the, one of the things for councils to, to think about is, is, you know, what are the unique challenges we have compared to other communities? Right? It's, it's, you know, you listen to the news around the challenges in some of the smaller communities in the island that had the E R shutdown. But it's, which is, which is devastating, right? But when you look at, when you, when you, when they, before they end that part of that, that story in the news, it's, you know, people have to travel additional thirty minutes. Right? So, and, and of course, huge focus. I mean, I mean, the minister is speaking about that and we're looking at, we're working towards these doctors, doctor shortages and whatnot.
You know, the premier dropped the F-bomb in the legislature because of it. Right? That's how frustrated he was.
Yeah, yes. So, so the, so I mean, I just, those are the things around, it's, you know, the intent today was more on just getting councils thinking about that. And then to what level of detail do you want to get to? And understanding there's, there's things that happen in parallel, right? I, I don't think the, the, the intent is not to be working on one thing and not, not look at anything else. I mean, we, we have a meeting with V C H S, a local V C H S group and the regional uh, manager on the sixteenth of this month um, here in town. Um, as, as a result of some of the discussions that happened here last week. But that's not the only thing a staff were focusing on. That's not the only thing councils focusing on either, right? But it's also to what level of detail, how much we try to grab at once. Uh, and, and also where can you make, where, where can you institute change, right? What, what, what roles or where do you have the ability to change? Um, because many of it is advocacy and lobbying and many of it is because, because we don't have the ability to just to, we can kick and scream all we want, but we don't have the power for lack of better words, right? So all that has to be considered as part of this process. I don't know if you have anything.
Yeah. So a couple uh, things to acknowledge. So the report that was linked in the agenda is literally the twenty twenty-one version. And so when Doug and I were um, working through it, recognized that there's updates that can occur. We didn't want to update it for today's meeting so that it looked different from what you'd last seen. So we want to put a bit of time into that so that it's a little bit fresher reflective of the current um, progress that's been achieved. We also recognize that in the recruitment and retention um, section, there's some of those activities and it's not do, do we or don't we? It's, now we have um, a recruitment liaison on side and some of those activities are most, most appropriate to be assigned to her. So um, you know, the relationships that's developed through those activities um, would be of direct benefit to her. So having that extra capacity is going to be a huge win for us. Um, and allows us to advance some of those things without it draining on staff. And I shouldn't say drain, without it taking staff time. One thing that that plan has, there's no reference whatsoever or hasn't been until this year is the C T project. And so, you know, we've, um, the N R M has been involved in that at the council level, at the staff level. Um, the C H P, it's a, it's a recurring topic every single month. But what we haven't decided as a group or we haven't had any direction on is to what degree do you want that capacity to come from the N R M? And it's one of those tricky things. We don't have a whole lot of direct control, but we, I think that we can lend some strength. In, in my view, I, I think it's a bit of a shaky process that they've been working through so far. It hasn't been a well um, laid plan in terms of how that project is fully considered and where the information is gathered from and who needs to be responsible and by when. And you know, the meeting that occurred on the sixteenth, it was pretty clear that there's still a lot of outstanding questions that the answers weren't readily available, even though the folks who are involved were right there on the call. So, you know, and maybe those are, maybe that's some of the contribution the N R M can have is, is just a lot of being annoying. You know, or we, we understand the steps that it takes to get a capital project in front of the deciding body. So maybe it's, you know, providing some, asking those hard questions or, you know, keeping up with deadlines and um, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, I'm spitballing, but um, it, when it's hard to see how exactly we would fit in, that's how I kind of see maybe that could be the N R M's role. And continuing to remind them how important it is to the community because unfortunately, when it's being worked on at desks outside of our own community, that, that sense of importance is lost. So, um, yeah, and then obviously um, recognizing that we are, we staff, you, you said it yourself, Counselor Goring, we don't have those answers of that information, but neither do staff. We're ready, we're pretty removed from the health system. We don't work in the health system. So we rely on folks like Doug or Diana or Annette to give us the goods, whether we want to hear it or not, or whether, you know, it, sometimes it's shocking, sometimes it's discouraging and disappointing, but it's, it's that um, access to information that would be very difficult to track down without those networks and those, those contacts. So anyways, um, that's kind of where I, I just wanted to draw some attention as we were working through the past projects and um, activities and what's currently on our plate, kind of on the horizons. We've seen it in the recent months. So.
Thank you. Please.
Yeah, I just would remind council that before us today is the regional health advocacy strategy and the recruitment and retention was part of that strategy, but not the whole strategy, right? So there's other pieces in that strategy. So, you know, that, that is um, the recruitment and retention project that, you know, is ticked, it's on its way, it's successful to date. Um, and so then I think like Mr. Blacky asked, so where do we want to go next? And yeah, so I just wanted to remind everybody that, and so I would like to see the updated advocacy um, strategy and part of that I will be asking for is some sort of way to determine when we need information, where do we go? You know, like I would remind council that um, it was through our consistent advocacy with the coalition that we got them to do that work on the healthcare piece and, and also with the North Central Local Government Association. They have a healthcare committee and that was directly as a result of us continually lobbying that it's all gone as far as U B C M because they have a healthcare committee too, but that has not been effective for us. But so it's that type of stuff, but without those updated information, we're kind of at a loss as to, so where do we go next? Right? Is it appropriate to wait forty-five days for an ultrasound? Is it appropriate to wait or best practice, I guess I should say? Um, so yeah, so it's just like that information that we need because now we belong to the B C Rural Health Network and they meet every week. And so how do we share that information? Like, how do we even, something that we've learned throughout our years, it's just even getting that information is difficult. Right? You know, like the ultrasound report that I'll be able to present to council soon. You know, it, it shows how many ultrasounds were ordered throughout two and a half years, I think it is. And then um, how many were conducted here, but how many were conducted elsewhere? And that report is fantastic because we are now armed with current information to say, you know, there was nine hundred and sixty-three ultrasounds or whatever, and five hundred of them had to be done out of, whatever, don't quote me on the numbers because I'll be wrong. Uh, you know, but it's that kind of information when you're sitting around the table with a minister or another government official or whatever it happens to be. You have that, those statistics right there at your hand, right? Or it's like, how many um, of our residents had to be medevaced out? And how long did they have to wait for that medevac? Was it three days or was it an hour or what? Like, you know, we don't have any of that information. So how do we continue to advocate for better services when, you know, we, we have these emotional stories that we can relay almost weekly, but we have no depth.
Yeah, there is a difference between best practice and Northern Health policy or Ministry of Health policy, right? And they, they may present their policy as best practice when it really doesn't work for us, right? And, and so understanding what that is and of course, who do you get the, who do we, who can we get the information from but them? Right? So you're, all of a sudden you're like, you're, you're trying to perhaps, you know, make a lobbying effort against the very people that you're trying to get information from, right? And, and so it, it, you start working yourself into a downward spiral of, of a friendly relationship potentially. And so we have to, we have to avoid that. I mean, I, I, I think that, you know, with respect to the CT scanner, it is on this. It's part of that virtual care session and strategic goal number five. And, and so it, and but so too is creating a um, the education, right? With normalized colleges on there. So a lot of those things are on there and, and are happening at this time. You know, in a, in a, in a small way, as far as the CT scanner goes, it was pretty obvious to me at the sixteenth that that they didn't think we, the money is available. And so they haven't paid attention to it at all, as far as I'm concerned. They, they really didn't look into it or, and, and, and back that up with the letter that we just recently got. From the Chair of Northern Health that responds to the letter that we sent to the, to the Northern Directors, right? That are appointed. It's a, it's a say nothing, except that, you know, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to move this whole thing ahead to the Ministry of Health and, and uh, you know, wondering if they think that CT scanners are, are, should be in small communities and you know, so I, I don't think they really were thinking about actually moving the CT scanner forward. And, and so we need to, you know, yeah, like he's, what'd you call it? Googlely speaking, whack-a-mole, right? Every, right? The, the most recent thing they came up with was, was, oh, we have this form. How long have you guys been working on this? And nobody's ever told you that they have this form that's supposed to be filled out that talks about, okay, how much money do you have? Right? So, so again, we can get hung up on, on individual things, but as part of all of this goes, you know, this plan is, is good in that it's recognized a lot of things that, that could be done. You've, you've achieved some. Some things are just happening organically. Right? That uh, normalized college is, is thinking about doing something more. So you plant the seed best you can. And maybe you don't get something right away, but you plant seed and you nurture it. And uh, all the rest of the advocacy groups that we're, we're belonging to, same thing, we plant seeds and move forward. You know, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's you, Doug, that are able to help us understand the difference between best practice and, 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 and Northern Health or Ministry of Health policy. Um, maybe that's a, maybe that's a role that, that you can help us play. Did I see your hand up? No? Is there anybody else?
No.
Okay, yeah. Okay, go ahead. Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, so I do think that one thing that council does need to um, talk about, whether it's not here, but um, coming up pretty shortly, I think, is um, in terms of the CT scanner project. That my understanding is that it'll be a whole different process if we have the money than if we are asking Northern Health for the money. So a conversation that we are going to have to have is council interested in contributing financially to the CT scanner. So I think we need to have that conversation sooner rather than later. Um, because I think that um, um, yeah, to move that project forward, I think we just need to determine where we are in. And by that, I don't mean like, I mean, that money that was put aside for projects in terms of the hospital hmm, board. Is that what it's called? Yeah. Right? Cause since that changeover, there's that money that has been sitting there that we had earmarked for um, community projects around healthcare that now isn't following to the new board, right?
Right.
So, yeah. I might have not explained that well, but you know where.
Yeah, I follow you. Yeah. And same, it's just, I mean, that's for Regional Hospital District Board. So this council um, looks at the funds that are in that uh, reserve account currently and makes decisions on where you want to utilize them, but also considering where the future projects are pegged based on the information provided by Northern Health and their capital plan. Um, because those need to be funded too, if they were to proceed. So that's how, that's a bigger conversation, a little bit bigger picture, right? Um, because yes, you're correct, those funds in the reserve fund currently that could be um, earmarked for that project, but then what are potential consequences of using, using it for the CT scanner and, and not having it for future planned capital work? But that's a different discussion. That's a bigger discussion from a, from a budgetary perspective for sure.
Follow ups. Yeah, sorry. Just to follow up in that, I think that um, the meeting that we had um, with Northern Health, they made it abundantly clear that in two months, that gentleman is gonna give us the decision on what kind of CT scanner is needed. And um, and then from there, if we actually have the money, the project can move forward a lot quicker this year. And if we are looking at expecting Northern Health to fund it, you know, the sixty, forty split or whatever, then we're looking, my understanding is three to five years out. Um, that's a lot of trips and that's a lot of stroke patients and that's a lot of, yeah.
So I agree with that. Doug, is there anything that, that you would like to add into this conversation before we start wrapping up?
Yeah, well, uh, thanks, Mayor. And, and yeah, I think everyone's really just touched on. So your strategic planning session is going to be really important. And our intent today was just that, to say there are a lot of things that you can get your teeth into. They don't have to be one after the other. You can obviously manage a number of different issues. Um, I'm more than happy and, and as Scott and Jaylee know, to provide any sort of uh, you know, strategic advice, but also practical advice navigating the healthcare system, finding the right people to talk to, to get the, you know, the data that Counselor Gruings talking about, but also just trying to get a sense of, of um, yeah, how, how I can help you and add capacity to, to the Northern Rockies on, on a variety of different healthcare topics. And I think, as I said, my, my intent today was really just to say, we talked back in twenty-one and again, last year about the number of things that could be on the agenda. Um, the C T has obviously bubbled to the top in the last year or two um, as, as a critical priority for the community. Um, but really it's, it's sort of wrestling out with what, you know, where do you want to focus your, your efforts? Um, and, and the types of issues. And again, I think too, the, the outcomes that you want to see, right? So what does success look like for council on, on some of these files? And as has been said, where can you apply your influence, whether it's spending power, like with the Regional Health Board? Or lobbying and advocacy with elected leaders? And then the practical supports as well, right? So you have the Regional Health Recruitment Liaison, as Jaylene said, who can take on a lot of these more practical uh, day-to-day um, activities as well. So I think it is a multi-front approach, um, but prioritizing, you know, where you want to apply the pressure and um, you know, and I think your strategic planning session coming up is going to be an excellent opportunity to explore that. And, and I, you know, I, I'm here at your service for whatever you need in terms of uh, adding capacity and, you know, intelligence on the healthcare system and, and just providing strategy and ideas for sure.
Thanks, Doug. Um, did we set with Christina when our, it's probably into March before we're looking at sitting down and doing a strategic planning session?
Yeah, she's got some dates that we're, we actually have a call with her today. Yes, just to try to figure out what that looks like and to see what options we have to get her here. If it's a combination of that and another remote session, so that's, I'll know more hopefully here this afternoon.
Yeah. Is there any way that we could prepare? Cause, cause I think in, in, into March is too late for us to yeah, sit down together and figure out whether we want to fund that CT scanner. So in, in, in the short term, that's, that's, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, you know, there's this plan, you know, the, the future plan with, with Doug, that, that can perhaps wait till the middle of March if that's, if that's when uh, uh, when Christina can, can find time with us. But I, 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 I would like to see us moving forward. And I don't know what those potential future projects are that you're talking about. You know, and, and so I don't know if there's any work you can do before we have this, this meeting where we, where, yeah, where we can look at. Okay, if there's X amount of dollars there, the CT scanner needs X minus whatever, and then the rest is available for these other things. And so what, and then we're in the budget discussions, what does raising the money look like for these other things? and then we're in the budget discussions, what does raising the money look like for these other things if we use the money that's available for the CT scanner? So that's what I'd be looking for at, at the next meeting for us to talk about. All right, we're going to bite the bullet and spend the money.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Um, so when we met, or when the Regional Hospital District Board met for the first time, we did connect to meeting in February. Yeah. So, and that was to look at, um, the capital plan once received from, the final capital plan once received from Northern Health, but I would anticipate that at the same time, we'd be looking at the reserve balances. Council can give some considerations to investment, um, for the CT, um, because I think we're legislated to have the the hospital district budget adopted by the end of March. So it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be an independent um, consideration from strategic planning. I think unfortunately, just the timelines are bound to, um, but yeah, and then there's a, you know, other little thing that there is a maximum levy that can be imposed by the hospital district annually. So that's part of that whole what your, what your funding model looks like, both reserves and, and, and revenues. So yeah, that, that we are looking at February.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. Because as Jay was saying, Trevor, so the Director of Finance, when he started receiving some initial information here, but waiting for the finalized information, um, those, there were some projects on there that would, would take a chunk out of the, uh, that reserve balance, right? So it's good to understand that big picture, but absolutely would make sense to have that discussion prior, because we waited until the end of March as part of strategic planning, when, when, doesn't, doesn't fit the urgency of, I'm going to be honest.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that, um, the capital projects are supposed to be decided in conjunction with the community. Maybe I misunderstood where I read that from, or I don't know that I've or our community maybe without me has been consulted in terms of capital projects. Um, maybe Northern Health has done some sort of consultative work with our community that I don't know about. Um, so that would be something that I would be most interested in finding out information at this upcoming meeting as to these capital projects, like, were they developed in consultation with the community?
Some of them, some of them would be linked more, would be linked to, uh, life cycle renewal projects, right, to replace new equipment. So they'll, they'll basically do an inspection of X and say, based on the inspection lifecycle, this piece of equipment is pigged to be replaced in two thousand and twenty-seven. And it's whatever that might be, similar when the ultrasound machine was replaced, uh, or the boiler system or the roof work that was done. So a lot of that capital work, um, could be, could be linked to, to, to lifecycle renewal, basically. To, to maintain, you would hope, maintain existing equipment services at the hospital. But that's all part of the discussion. But your, and, and to the other, to your other point, Counselor Goring, yes, the intent of some of the information, if it's anything new or a change, it's, it's, that's the purpose of the Regional Hospital District Board meeting to discuss that. Um, so that it can ensure that it meets the needs of the community and provide the, the appropriate feedback and engagement and whatnot is all part of that. So so you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, if, if, if that's the whole purpose of reunion and having those discussions as a, as a board.
Yeah, my, my experience with the Peace River Regional Hospital Board is that when they say community, they mean the Regional Hospital Board. It's not a broader community, um, from, from my, from my experience. I mean, I think when they were talking about the hospital, there was, there was an outreach. But that's a, you know, that's a hundred and ten million dollar project, so, um, so they reached out. But when, when it comes to the rest of it, it's really just the Regional Hospital Board, which we are representatives on now, and, and hopefully somebody from the nation.
And, and the CT scanner is a perfect example of, of engagement with the community also, because if you're, if, if that wasn't part of a plan, municipality was to contribute minimally forty percent of that project. Um, there, and, and the reserve balances just support future work that's existing in the, in that plan, then you'd have to find those funds from the community in different ways, unless there was grants or opportunities or whatnot, whatnot. But that would be good engagement for the community, you know, to, to, you know, if you support, which we pretty confident the community supports the CT scanner based on what we heard. But that's that RHD, Northern Health, broader engagement piece when it comes to, to bringing in the community, right? Another thing that would be interesting to CT is if it's three to five years. Um, if, if you went, if they went through a normal process and the municipality was looking, and this is more strategies in terms of talking potential, is if you're looking at funding it this year, nothing's saying that we still couldn't communicate with Northern Health to say, but in five years' time, if you were to perceive it to be a business case, give us a sixty percent then, and we, and, and replenish.
Yeah.
And replenish.
I replenish our reserve.
Reinish our reserve, right? Um, but, but I mean, to me, to me, to me, that's a valid question. That's a valid, that's a valid discussion. If, if if the business case dictates you're going to do, to do it anyway, um, and we, and it gets installed now, then, okay. You know, we want to sell it now and maybe, we, we, we would fully expect that when you would normally go through with it and install it, even though it's been there for four or five years, provide the funding to replenish your reserve fund, as an option. So just, just food for thought.
Yeah. And, and I, from what I heard at that meeting, I think if, if you put up a hundred percent, then there's sixty percent. You've you've forfeited that sixty percent in order to put your project at the front. That, that.
Oh, oh, quite, oh, quite likely.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
But I don't know, I, it's up.
Yeah, I like the way you're thinking.
It's up to council, but I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see why you still wouldn't ask.
Yeah.
We're not afraid to ask.
That's, that's what we're here for.
It's the deal that we have with them, so why not leverage it? So I'm conscious of time, um, three minutes left till the end of this meeting. Is there anybody who has anything else before we wrap it up? Okay, I, I think we got a good presentation on the state of affairs with respect to where we've been. Doug, thank you very much for, uh, for bringing all of us up to speed and those who were here before back up to speed, um, for those ideas that you had. I think we've had a a discussion. I don't, I don't, we were bouncing things around. I don't know if we have any specific direction, except let's, let's get, pull a meeting together of the Regional Hospital Board, look at the capital. Most of this will go to the strategic planning session of, of some type. I think that's, that's the direction for it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm actually quite elated that, that councils can still wants, wants to pursue the health agenda and, and move forward on it. So it's such an important one for the community. So thank you for your time and, uh, and your good feedback today. And I'll follow up with, uh, Scott and Jaylene, and, uh, we'll sort out next steps. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's nothing else. We are adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your day, everybody.